Okay, good evening, Byram Hills. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, February 9th, 2021 in our snowy community. It is, let's see, 8:04. The board met in executive session at 7:09 to discuss a personnel matter, teacher tenure, and a personal matter involving our beloved superintendent. Would everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any, any comments from the public on matters not on the agenda, Dr. Tim?
I do not see any questions from the public.
Okay. May I please have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda? Amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, please? I have a motion, please, to adopt tonight's consent agenda for personnel, for special services and for business, noting that we have an add on the business consent agenda 8.2, the approval of the Brewster ICE Arena, the charter ICE rental agreement. I have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, please? Thank you. Before we turn our attention to the regular agenda, I just want to call the community's attention to the passing of truly a great man in Armonk. Vincent Greco passed away very recently. And for many years, the Armonk Chamber of Commerce gave out a Citizen of the Year Award. Well, if you could turn about a Citizen of Life Award for Armonk, I think Vince Greco would win it. He was such a source of support for every Armonk institution that he touched, including the school district. Vince was a former board member, an unwavering supporter of Byram Hills, of the teachers, of the students, of the programs. You could always find Vince at a ballgame or your football game. You could see Vince would come to the shows. You'd come to the musical performances. You'd come to the science research evenings. If there was a big event in Armonk having to do with the schools, Vince was there. If there was a big event to do with the Hamlet of Armonk, Vince was there. He was a wonderful man. He truly was a hero. He was a beloved member of the, of the Armonk Veterans of VFW. And I know when I first ran for the board, what a source of support he was to me. And for all those who came after me, Vince would always sit down and talk with you, give you his views. And he was never pushy. He was always done in a matter of civility, with a matter of poise. He was a wonderful, wonderful man. And to those, if any of Vince's family somehow see this tape, we want you to know in what high esteem we held Vincent, and we will always hold him. He will be dearly missed. He was a wonderful man, and may Vincent, may you rest in peace. You've earned it, my friend. Thank you. Jen, you want to say something on that?
I would love to say something about Vince Greco. I first met Vince Greco when I was 21 years old as a new teacher coming to Crittenden. And I have to say, if I could count on one hand, the people who have influenced me as a professional and a leader of the district, I think Vince is one of them. I will definitely never forget, even last year, Vince coming to visit me in my office monthly, sitting on my couch with notes of his talking points, of what he wanted to talk about. He's a person who's watched me and helped me throughout my entire career, and all of the administrators here. He used to visit Chris Walsh monthly, Kim Lappel. He would come into the district office to see Tim, to see Gina. And I think from a personal level, Vince always connected us all to the community. And when I say that in this community, I feel responsible for everyone from birth to death, he's, he is that person, right? So every new child in this district might be the child of a former student of mine. And every older person walking through town might be the parent of a former student of mine, or a Vince Greco who's been in my life since I was 21, you know, really making the connection between the community and Byram. That is something I'm never going to forget. Last year, when Dr. Powderly, another one of my mentors, passed away, Vince Greco and I rode up to the services together. And, and I cherish that time that I had with him, to hear his stories every single time I was ever with him. He spoke of Mary Lou, his wife. He spoke about his time in the service. And he really connected us to our present and our past. When Vince received the 37th Annual Senior Citizens Hall of Fame Award at a luncheon, there was a little snippet that was written about him that I'd like to read. At the time, that was two years, I think, two years ago. Vince Greco is 92 years old, and he's been a Westchester resident for 70 years. He served in the Navy during World War II. As a retired teacher and guidance counselor, he influenced countless young persons who went on to highly productive careers. As the current commander of the American Legion post in Armonk, he's worked with multiple senior citizen groups, encouraging them to use the facilities for activities like bingo dances and dinners. He also played a major role in the Legion's Boys State Program, introducing over 30 outstanding nominated boys and girls to the Armonk Town Board for the past 10-plus years. As president of St. Patrick's Parish Council, he was involved in obtaining space for a variety of senior groups who implemented programs for a large number of seniors in the Westchester community. He helped establish the Authentic Science Research Project at Byram Hills High School, a program that became the national model for teaching research in science, and has been replicated by over 1,000 school districts. So I have to say, he is and always will be one of the great ones. In my office, I have a picture of Vince Greco on the Memorial Day Ceremony where he invited us every year, and our students would come to play outside the American Legion. And I have a great picture of him speaking from the pulpit there, and I will keep it there in his memory and in fondness to him. If we could have a moment of silence for Vince for everything he's been to all of us.
Yes, of course.
Thank you, everyone. And thank you to Vince's family for giving him to us.
Thank you, Jen. He really was a very special guy. Okay. With the consent of the board, we're going to move item 11.1, the presentation of the revised schedules for HCC and the high school. We're going to move that just ahead of our curriculum conversation report. So Jen, let's do 11.1 now.
Okay, tonight, we have Chris Walsh and Kim Lappel here. We have spent a lot of time over the past few years talking about the schedules at the high school, starting with the Stanford Challenge Success survey results, in looking at what our kids needed in a school schedule. And then having this COVID opportunity, I think this is the only good thing we can say came out of COVID, was a time for Chris Walsh and Kim Lappel to really start looking at how they could make changes to the schedule at the high school to fit the needs of the kids right now, and for us to have a hybrid program that our kids would thrive in. They learned a lot about changing the schedule by doing that. And I think what this year gave us is an opportunity to experiment in a little way with some of the great concepts that we have about scheduling. And Chris and Kim are here tonight to talk about their schedules. I think I will start with Chris Walsh, if that's okay with you, Chris. And Tim, are you going to share his schedules, or?
I think, Chris, you want me to, or? Were you going to share, Chris?
Yeah, I can share the presentation that I have, if that's all right. All right. Thank you, everybody, for allowing Kim and I to come and speak to you regarding all of our master schedule proposals. It's been a tremendous learning, learning process for us as we've gone through this. For us at the high school, it goes back to October of 2017, and then inviting so many members of the community and stakeholders to be part of the process. We really feel like we're at the point right now where, where everybody is on board with this. And we're really happy, I'm really happy that I get the chance to, to discuss it. So let me just present here. All right, is it showing up?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, great. As Jen was saying, we really were able to go to school, so to speak, on the ability for us to change a master schedule this year. And looking at what we've done over the course of the summer, and what we have in place right now, we were able to get a lot of really deep learning from that schedule and to apply it to all of the, the learning that we had already done through the past couple of years. So the first thing we always ask when we're doing this is, why are we proposing a new master schedule? And a quote that we kept going back to is, trying to get everybody to think about what the master schedule truly means to a school. And the master schedule is to a school what grading policies are to teachers and classrooms. Very powerful. It reveals the true beliefs, attitudes, values, and priorities of the school. And the school's master schedule is like looking at an MRI of the inner workings of a school, and it is a window to the soul of the school. Very powerful quote there that came off of a document from the National Association of Secondary School Principals, one of their, one of their documents. So when we were looking at that, thinking about it on that level, that it could be the possible, you know, it identifies who we are as a learning institution, that master schedule drives that, who we are. And connecting that to our mission, we need to make sure that we are doing everything to get that master schedule right, because it does reveal so much about who we are. So going back to October of 2017, that's when we really started to look into the process and start with the idea that, well, maybe the master schedule that we had was not necessarily the one that we wanted to represent us, or the one that was allowing us to get, achieve our mission the best way possible. So we met with School Scheduling Associates, which is one of the main, the only major organizations that actually goes into schools and looks at the master schedule and then works with them to, to develop new ones. They were really good, but they really weren't able to address the Byram Hills specific needs. We felt we needed to get a little bit more data about who we were before we went forward with it. That's when we decided to look at a partnership with Challenge Success. And we, what I liked about Challenge Success is that they looked through the overall student experience and looking at how that schedule and the students' use of time impacts the overall student experience. And that was one of the real key reasons that I was drawn to Challenge Success, is that they understood on a practical level that you weren't going to be able to change the overall experience for students without looking at how that master schedule drove their time. We were able to give the, the survey the first time back in November of 2018. We began unpacking it in January of 2000, sorry, 2017. In 2018, we looked at all the data. We were able to attend the fall conference and work with other schools who had already gone through the process of amending and changing their master schedule to align more closely with their values. We heard a lot of really great input from different schools across the country who were just like us, who had a lot of success, who felt connected to the process, and really were at some points tentative with moving forward and changing anything that, that they had done recently because it had worked so well for them. We were able to give the parents a voice in this through the master schedule survey, through just about, I would say, every other of my principal's coffees since that time, we've touched on the master schedule. We had the Master Schedule Steering Committee, who came into effect in May of 2019. And that was made up of every, one member from every department. And each of those department members were able to bring in the lens from their specific, specific content areas. We also had administrators on that as well. And that has really been the working committee that has been caring for this process since that time. In October of 2019, we invited a number of different members of the community and for our stakeholders interview. And we had board members there, many of you were there. We had people in the community and were wearing various hats. Teachers were asking questions of all these different stakeholders. We had district administrators, building administrators, business leaders in the, in the community, mental health professionals, parents, parents of students who had graduated kids, parents who just started out. We tried to get as many people from the community in and just unpack what they were thinking about for our master schedule. And from that time, we really started to take shape, some of the things that we were looking into. The course of last November through February, the Master Schedule Steering Committee was able to go out along with students on the Student Advisory Committee and visit eight different schools in our region to look at their master schedules. And they were either block schedules, traditional schedules, hybrid schedules, all sorts of different schedules from the schools. And we visited and we were able to interview teachers and students to ask them about the pros and cons of the schedule. After that, March 20th, March 4th of last year, interestingly enough, was our last faculty meeting before we actually had to go out for COVID. So March 4th is a Wednesday, the first Wednesday of every month. That's when we hold our faculty meeting. We were able at that time to present the schedule that we felt reflected our values and represented all of the input from the stakeholders and the survey data. Now, the week after that, March 11th, we had a meeting where I told everybody, take home everything that you think you might need for the next couple of months. And we left that building and got a call from Dr. Lamia that night that we were not going to be going back. So throughout the course of the, the spring, we realized that we needed to focus our attention on a schedule that would be, that would be useful when we were able to return in September. So we were able to take a lot of the information that we had already gathered, and we were able to apply it to the master schedule subcommittee work that was being done to create our blended learning schedule. So those things like office hours, a longer lunch, transition times, longer class periods, triple drops, those were things that we were able to implement in our blended learning schedule that some of them are showing up now in the schedule that we will be proposing. So throughout the course of this, this fall and into the winter, we've implemented the blending learnings, blended learning schedule, and we've really gone to school on it. Some things work, some things don't work, but we're able to take some of those different aspects and apply it to our formal presentation, which is this master schedule. So the next step is, how does this proposed master schedule reflect our values as a learning community? Well, wellness is certainly there, the depth of content, where our previous schedule, our drop schedule, really appreciated depth, or excuse me, breadth, and this one is much more related to the depth of the content. Student-centered learning is at the forefront in this schedule. Group work and collaboration are celebrated, the ability to differentiate 21st century learning, the fresh professionalism of teachers and their craft. It creates a climate of care for our students. Project problem-based learning, we're going to be able to be accessed even more so with this. It aligns the colleges. And in going out and asking the colleges whether they prefer one schedule to another, they feel like the one that we are proposing aligns to what they are looking for. And it would be something that when they look at the types of schools where their, their kids are getting the acceptances from, they say they have similar schedules to the ones that we're presenting here. Academic engagement is a big thing that we took away from the survey with Challenge Success. And almost 70% of our students were quote unquote, "doing school." And we believe that this schedule allows them to be actually more engaged and moves away from just doing school. Interdisciplinary connections are something that are very important for us. And over the past four to five years, we see that more and more content areas are working together, whether that be with our seminars, or global scholars, or even pathways in engineering. And even in some of our AP classes, that's something that's moving more towards being normal. Global competency is something, obviously, that we've been working on, critical thinking, grit, lifelong learning. And then sorry? Let me go back there. All of those things, we feel like we're going to be able to address with our new schedule, with this new schedule. And obviously, when we look back to the schedule that we had, that was important for that certain time and place. That schedule did a really good job of making sure that students were scheduled throughout the day, and that they were able to take as many courses as possible, and that their free time in the building was limited. This schedule has deeper needs, right? We were, it's almost like we were building off of the successes of that schedule. And now we realize that, yeah, although it was great at that time, there are some factors that we don't really want to move forward with, because the, the negatives on there are now popping up. And we see that in terms of some of the mental health issues, the stress and the anxiety that could be connected to our old schedule. Now, this schedule is a much more humanistic approach to schooling. It's actually much more research-based and goes into the way that, much more brain-centered study, my, my, the, the way the mind works, and the way that our students are going to be expected to work as they go onto college and then into the workforce. So we're extending from 49 minutes to 64 minutes, an extra 15 minutes in each class period. We're going to be on an eight-day cycle, whereas before it was a nine-day. We will no longer have an A-day, which is a, a day where students met eight periods. This one, we're going to be meeting five class periods per day. Whereas we had the 26-minute lunch before, now we are going up to a 43-minute lunch, and it's going to be a universal lunch throughout the building. Office hours, we are going to open the school day with a 25-minute opening office hours. In that way, they're going to be directed and scheduled, but they'll also be able to be utilized for students, if they don't have office hours, to actually get a little bit more of their work done before they get to school, or even to sleep. And, you know, all of the research that we're hearing right now from the American Medical Association, students who are high school age, the later you can start, the better they, they will do. And certainly, we've seen that this year with our blended learning schedule, having the off, opening small group tutorials and blended learning, or excuse me, independent e-learning. There's a much more relaxed rhythm to the day, because students are not coming in running to get to that first period class. They're coming in, they're working with teachers, but it's at a much more relaxed pace. We are still going to have four minutes passing time, and we're able to do that because there's only three periods in there where they're actually going to need to get to class within four minutes. Their students are still going to be able to take eight courses per semester, which we felt was important. We didn't want to not have them be able to take as many classes as they did in the past. So I'm going to pull it up now, and I'll show you what it looks like. Hopefully, you can see. So this would be the way that it would look. And it's really a, almost like a triple drop. So each class meets five days in this.
Have it up.
We don't have it.
Okay. We're still seeing the other.
Okay, that's weird.
Do you need me to put it up?
Yeah, could you put it up? I don't know. It says it's sharing on mine.
Yeah, why don't you stop sharing what you're sharing there?
How about now?
There you go. You got it.
All right. So this is the master schedule that we're proposing, and you could see the, the framework of it. So students are still going to be scheduling eight courses. So they would take eight per semester, which is the same as what they're teaching, that they're taking now. You can see the office hours to start the day, and then each of the periods is going to be 64 minutes. Lunchtime again, 43 minutes, and that's a universal lunch, so that's everybody in the building having the same lunch period. And then we will still have after-school help as we do now.
Chris?
Yes?
I know, I know you have an answer for this. So, because, thanks for all the energy around it. And sometimes significant change like this takes a long time. So thanks for all the energy in getting us here, and all the input from everyone. So thank you. Two, two quick things. Lunch, everybody at the same time, obviously, that doesn't create a complexity with respect to people being able to get lunch and food, or I'm sure that's been thought about.
Yeah, great question, Mike. And, you know, we've been working with, Kelly has been working with Aramark, and some of the structural changes have already been done to Bobcat Hall. But we're also going to be having Aramark utilize different kiosks throughout the building. And whereas before, traditionally, we were eating just in the cafeteria or in the area around the orchestra and band rooms, now we're going to be opening up Bobcat Hall, and that's going to be dedicated specifically just for, for eating. It's not going to be a multi-use space as it was in the past. We're also going to be opening up the lecture hall and possibly the theater during those lunch hours to be able to accommodate everybody in the building.
Great, thank you. And the second obvious question revolves in and around sports. What is the, what is the time that the day ends now? I probably should know that, but I don't.
Yeah, still the, we, we didn't change anything with the contractual start and end times of the day. Still goes 7:45 to 2:25.
Great. Thank you.
Chris, just one quick question for you, I guess. After the experience of teaching longer blocks this year, and I'm sure that if you ask 10 faculty members, you may get different answers from different departments or different teachers based on their style. But in general, like, are the teachers comfortable with, you know, this change and excited to embark on, on this new, this new schedule? Or, or is there, is there trepidation and, and some hesitation?
Yeah, if, I'm telling you, when we had our first master schedules steering committee meeting this year, there was, there was like no discussion of going back to our old drop schedule. People would literally laugh me off of the Google Meet when I, when I said, does anybody think anybody would want to do that? Only because they see how much healthier it is of a schedule than what we were using in the past. So one of the things that we have to do is to get the assent of all of the teachers before we can propose it. And of all the teachers, I've only had three that would even think about going back to the old one. And of all the teachers, I've only had three that would even think about going back to the old one. And that's all of the, the faculty at the high school. We've only had three that would go back.
Wow. If I can add on top of that, so we've been planning, I've been planning with Chris and Kim Wash, Kim Wash, Kim Lappel. Sorry. So we've been planning together on some professional learning opportunities for teachers around the use of time and how to plan for long blocks of time, recognizing that it's not familiar to teachers. And we've been working with some of our consultants that we've had a relationship with in the district. Many of our teachers know their work already. So that will take place over the summer through the next couple of years. So teachers are comfortable with longer blocks of time and not having class every day.
But it's very similar to what they're doing this year.
Yeah, very similar. And one of the, one of the things that we, you know, the difference would be the fifty minutes of, of instructional time. You know, this year we had to build in the ten minutes transition, which was important for everybody at home. The universal lunch is not a universal, sorry, it's not a universal lunch this year. We have two different lunch periods. And then we were, the office hours are going to be during the morning. Whereas this year, the small group tutorials, they alternate. And then we have the independent e-learning, which also alternates. That Wednesday afternoon section that you see, right? The schedule this year is built off of five days, whereas this one, it's eight days. And then that's why you don't see a, a period in there that's more extended like you would see on Wednesday afternoon in this year's schedule.
Chris, oh, sorry.
Lara, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I was just going to say, can you just explain again? It's going back to four minutes per class. And the reason we had ten minutes was because of the remote learning. Is that what you were saying?
Yeah. So this year you, it, it, there was two reasons why we had ten minute transition times between class. So the first was that we needed, we knew we were going to need to stagger each of the different grade levels during passing time. So we knew that we were going to have the freshmen in the hallways and we wanted to give them time to get to their class. So we did actually need those ten minutes. But we also knew that there was going to be kids at home who we wanted them to be able to walk away from the computer to actually stretch so that they weren't stuck looking at a screen. So that that ten minute, ten minutes was built in to get them to be able to stretch and, and get around.
So Chris, it should, you know, God forbid, we, we need to stay at a hybrid schedule in the fall. Would this schedule be applicable and amenable to that, I guess?
Great question. We've, you know, we've been looking at that as well. And one of the things we thought was, well, maybe we just need to create two master schedules. That's the way we started out. And you know, the more we got into that, the less we liked that idea. Because we saw that we could make changes to the one I'm proposing tonight, where we do build in extra transition time. And then we utilize those office hours in different ways again. So the only thing we might need to do is to look at our lunch periods. But we would try to use this schedule if we were still in the same, you know, the same, under the same guidelines as we are now. We would try to use this schedule and just modify it to meet our needs.
And Chris, you did that really well with the schedule that we have now to make sure that kids are getting the same or similar face time with teachers. That you're not going in on a day that you don't have that particular class for every day of the week. So I'm sure that you can adapt this one the same way. Chris, I, I really like a couple of things that you and your group did here. But first of all, I think you have a student voice, you have a faculty voice, you have a steering committee voice, you have a parent voice. And an administrative voice on this schedule that was proposed. I think you took your time with it. I think you had a trial this year, which through our discussions taught you a lot about some things to avoid and some things to make sure that you kept. Instructional minutes, as far as teachers' contracts are concerned, remained really aligned. But it seems that this kind of schedule gave kids more time for depth. We're not, when, when I think back to the schedules before and kids going eight periods a day, every forty, how many minutes, forty?
Forty-four on a, a day, forty-nine on a regular day.
And if you think about the fact that every time a child gets into a class and settles down and then gets up from a class and moves to another class and sits down and settles down. Then the number of minutes at the beginning and the end of a period is actually important. So if it takes three minutes for kids to, there's four minutes of passing time, but then it takes what? Two or three minutes for kids to settle down and two or three minutes for kids to wrap up before they leave. You could be talking about four to six minutes of every class that's spent in the judgment period. And by taking out three of those periods, it's potentially eighteen minutes that could, to me, be back in the schedule. And these are some of the hidden things that I know you worked hard on and talked a lot about. But they're not things that are very apparent to people who may just be looking at the schedule for the first time. So just commend you for a lot of thought in this schedule.
Is this schedule something that is an action item for the board?
I don't think so, Ira, because it's not a change in the schedule of the school day.
Okay.
But we'll check and we have time.
Okay. So Chris, was the schedule COVID generated? Was the COVID, was the stay, was the COVID era, the, it's the accelerant for this schedule?
I, you know, Ira, I think we would have had it in place. Maybe this, this year we would have at least piloted it at some, at some point.
Yeah. Yeah.
Chris, it did help it along.
Well, I think you did a real, it looks very thoughtful to me. So Jason, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question, but first just a comment following up on what Jen had said. I think, you know, there was obviously many stakeholders and many voices and you clearly took the time to hear them all. I think there's going to be a lot of happy people in the community, parents and teachers. I think this was a long time coming. And you know, I think it's excellent. My question, and I might have missed the answer, or I might have missed your comment on this. Right now, does a student take in the course of a semester, how many classes? And how will that change next year, if at all? Because I have a follow-up question based on that answer.
So right, right now, they, they would take eight per semester. And next year it would be the same thing. And that's what they did in, you know, what, what we did with our drop schedule. So many of the schools that we went to visit, they, students could have seven, even some places as low as six. But we felt like it was really important to allow our kids to still have that choice. To still give them that ability to, you know, to go and check out different content areas, look at different electives and try to do that as much as possible.
Thank you. That, that answered my question. I just wanted to make sure that they would sell, they'd have the depth in the classes they have, but still have those, that optionality with the electives. And it sounds like it's all being addressed. This is wonderful. Thank you.
Chris, this is a one, one minor question, but seven AM health, does this do anything for that? Is there any way to bring that into the regular school day or is it still impossible?
Yeah, we're looking at whether we could do that during office hours. So what we would do is incorporate office hours and then another period in there somehow. So we're, we are looking at that. We are trying to eliminate that if possible. And we're, we're just looking to see whether it makes sense to do that during office hours or not.
That would be great. That'd be really, really helpful, I think.
A quick question, that the early dismissal on Wednesdays is a function of this year, correct? It's not something that can go forward. I think it was really appreciated by the students this year. But maybe that's also just because of the hybrid situation. I'm not sure what that would look like, you know, if we were back in school full time. But I was just curious about that.
Yeah, it's a great question, Lara. That really is a, a byproduct of us having eight course requests and doing it within a five day cycle and meeting five periods per day. So there's one period in that cycle that sticks out there like a sore thumb. And that happened on Wednesday afternoon. So this, because we're doing it over the courses, a course of eight days, we're not going to see that.
Any other questions for Chris before we turn it over to Kim?
Great job, Chris.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. And I just wanted, I just wanted to really say thank you to, to Brian Horn, Colleen O'Connor, Dave Bruskowitz, Eric Odenyaki, Jane Carlin, John Norton, Kristen Sautner, Lisa Squadron, Michelle Collins and Steve Bornerman for all of their work on the steering committee. It really was a joint process and I really appreciate their, their work and their commitment to this.
On behalf of the academy, we thank you. I mean, you got them all in. Thank you, Chris. Thanks very much. Where is Ms. Lappel?
Here. Can you see me? All right.
Yes, we can.
All right. I will also if present some information. Okay. So unlike the high school, which started this process in two thousand seventeen, when I was the assistant principal and I went and looked at a, Dr. Patterley allowed me to go to a scheduling conference. I realized that at the time, the middle school schedule that he had created was phenomenal. And you could block and you could do all these things and there was never a need for change. So really our changes that you're going to be seeing come out of the fact that we had to create something to address all of our needs during COVID. And from that, we realized that there were some ways that we could build upon the schedule that we had in place that still was very good. So what I'm going to present to you are some of the nuances and there's some, some significant changes. But structurally, the, the schedule has remained the same. Before I do that, I just wanted to explain some of the driving forces that we felt were important when we were creating a schedule. So the schedule had to allow for a, for our essential question to be supported as much as possible. We wanted our students to be active learners. We want them to have the opportunity to take healthy risks. We want them, of course, the rigor to exist. And this last piece, the healthy mindset, things that we learned from challenge success. We wanted to make sure that this schedule fostered that. We also knew through challenge success, the importance of, again, capturing what was identified through the work of challenge success is essential pieces to a child's life and their educational experience. Their schedule and the use of time, the opportunity to really delve into an in-depth experience in their academics. And then a climate of care would be the sea in space, were the areas that I thought a schedule could really address. So with the help of our scheduling committee members that began their work last year, probably in December of last year is when we took a breath and said, wow, we have to think about what our schedule is going to look like moving forward. Cause similar to the high school, I don't think we could imagine ever going back to the old schedule. But we knew there was a lot of value in that traditional schedule we used to have. So the committee went and we wanted to make sure that we received feedback from everyone. So we utilized faculty meetings. There was a principal, principals advisory group made up of students. We had feedback loops that the committee was all part of reaching out, taking feedback based on what we needed to have in a schedule. And we had also had small listening groups. And what we heard was that there was tremendous benefit from these longer periods of time. And at the bottom, you'll see that those longer period times or reduce student stress and anxiety. They felt like the students that their workloads were more manageable. Their days were less frenzied in this COVID schedule where we were blocking the time. They also felt like they could go in depth in their experiences, many of their classes. There was overwhelming support that everyone really liked starting their day with an X pod. So in this schedule that we were living through, the longer periods of time, the X pod, the ability to support students and connect to them, whether it be through X pod or other experiences. The flexibility in our time and our opportunity and greeting, and then this wellness period. Now you'll see that there's an SDL underneath wellness that goes to our future schedule. But we built in a wellness where teachers allowed students to go outside. It was like their recess, but it was with the teachers instead of them having a recess with teaching aides or with our, our cafeteria monitor and adults. Our teachers were actually taking our kids out for recess. So from that, ta-da, came the middle school schedule. And I'm going to talk you through this so that you can see, I'm going to highlight the major changes. What you can see is that this schedule values the blocks, the blocks of time. Now it doesn't in sixth grade because what we heard overwhelmingly from teachers and students was that consistency for students was very important. And in sixth grade, students go from class to class in a smaller area. So there's, the transition is, is milder, is more manageable. That's in sixth grade, students also move in the same group for their academics. So right along those lines, we knew it was important that teachers wanted to see their students every day in their academics. So that is reflected in our sixth grade schedule. I do want to note though, that the sixth grade teachers have spoken to me and Mr. Ancona about the fact that this schedule allows them to block as well. So if they did want to block time and do something with their, it, it's what they always could do. Teachers are always allowed, the team of teachers to, to use their team time as they wish. So sixth grade might actually take advantage of their opportunities to block during the day. The big changes, we moved, because if you look at, I'm pointing at it, you can't see me. But periods three and four are when our students have the mini courses where they experience a world language. There's health, there's art, there's tech. We reduced those time periods a little bit, but we also took guidance and moved guidance into a wellness period, which is at ten forty. There's a wellness break and intramural time. And the guidance will come out of the mini classes and they will go and work with students during that wellness time. And so pulling also, and then we reconfigured the world language. So what that did is it moved from ten mini courses that students were having throughout the year. Again, three of them were world language, two were art, two were tech, we had health. We moved them to eight mini courses. So they would meet their students for a longer amount of time during the year. Our seventh and eighth grade, I'm going to switch over to that because those are where the, the bigger changes occurred. You'll see that we have blocked their time. With that allows, we heard exactly what Chris spoke about in the high school. Students weren't frenzied running from class to class. They were able to have a more focused day. They had more manageable workloads. So the, the blocks that we have incorporated into the seventh and eighth grade allows for that to happen. We have also then they have their lunch period with intramurals. And we did something called SDL, which we're calling student directed learning time. And what that time allows students to do is to meet with teachers for extra help, to work with groups if there is, if they have group work and they want time to work with a group of students, they can do that. If there's a rich task in math that's taking place, that could be time that they meet with their, where they're grouped during SDL, during the Revolutionary War monologues, they can meet with their teachers and, and focus a little bit more on that. So it provides time during the school day that really used to be their callback, that, that fifth class during the day. It's now been moved to more opportunities to differentiate your support for students. There also might be students who don't need any extra help during that week. That they're caught up in their work, they don't have any group work that they need to do. They, they want to engage in intramurals. That will be a second time during the school day that students could go to intramurals. They also could, again, there could be interdisciplinary opportunities that the teams might take advantage of. This exists both in seventh and eighth grade. And we are encouraged, it gives more students voice and choice. The other thing we did, which I don't know if this is too detailed, but we switched tech and health during the day. Tech, technology used to be with music in the middle of the day. We have expanded the time, again, music and now health will have a block of time that's a little bit longer. And we have moved tech up against art and that allowed tech to have more heterogeneous groupings that weren't based on music. Again, this focuses on truly providing students with voice and choice. They have a little bit more opportunity to dictate what they think they need. They have opportunity to meet with their faculty, their teachers if necessary. And most importantly, these blocks allow us to support a rich experience during the school day throughout the week. And that's it.
Kim, if you go back for a moment, could you just tell the time on X pods? I don't think it was on your.
Yes, there we go. X pod would begin the day every day and it's not there, but it's 7:45 to 8 o'clock. And what we learned and what we thought we could do during that time, not only will they start the day in small groups that are, they're similar teams, meaning if you're on six A, you would be in an X pod with other six A students, they're smaller groups. And everyone in the faculty would be involved in the start of the day. But there are opportunities during X pod for sale members. We were thinking about how students now can visit and present to other students an initiative that sale might be doing, or if there's a club that would want to do something and present to groups. It, it's time that they all have in common that they're free, that they can, X pod will always have support for executive functioning. X pod will always have ways to support, support students with their academics for them to reflect on goals and to, and to see how they're doing in their academics, work with teachers, reach out to teachers and make sure that they're organized for the day or for the week. But there's also a community time now during X pod that if students wanted to, they can, an eighth grade group can mentor a sixth grade group. And, and those are things that we're going to still have to refine as we go along, as we did when we learned this COVID schedule. But there are these common opportunities that might allow for some mentorship and other opportunities in our school to build community.
Thank you, Kim.
Any questions for Kim?
Any, any questions for the eminent Ms. Lappel? These are very interesting. I mean, it's interesting to me that both the high school and middle school are doing this at the same time.
I've had a lot of good feedback from the kids from about X pod. They really like that.
Yeah, I echo that. It sounds like it's really worked well.
Yeah, it's a great way to start the day.
Well, I'm sorry, you might have mentioned this, but will lunch consist of the wellness period still, or will it just be a full lunch now?
So there'll be a, a full lunch. And then that student directed learning time will allow for student choice where there will be an opportunity for intramural. So there'll be intramurals during lunch and then there'll be a second option to have intramurals during that student directed learning.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Great sense, great sensitive schedule for kids of that age.
Yeah, yeah, there really is. There's really a lot to this. There's a lot of factors. I think Chris really laid them out very well in his preface to his schedule that I could see Kim also put that thought into it. So very good. Any other comments from the board on this?
I just think that the schedule will be very, it'll be a good transition to high school. I think it's, it's, it's very thoughtful in that, in that regard. So kudos to both of you. Great job.
All right, I guess Jen, my same question would be, is this an action item for the board? I tend to agree with you, it probably isn't.
I don't think it is. I'll have to check.
I, I guess if it, if it was something that would require a renegotiation of a union contract.
Exactly.
Then it would become an action item for us, but we'd still like to know what's going on in these matters. So this is a, because this really is truly what goes on in the schools. This is backbone, what we're doing.
In addition to opening our doors during a pandemic in a way that not a lot of other places have been able to do. You know, kids in, in this part of the country, especially Westchester have had opportunities. Some other kids are, have never been in school this school year so far. And during that same time, Chris and Kim did not stop looking at schedules that are going to benefit kids and have their eye on next year, which I think is really amazing, given everything that the two of you have done since this all started in March and since your scheduling, Chris began a couple of years ago. I can't believe it's been three years already since you did the challenge success survey. It feels like yesterday. So thank you both for continuing on with this work and not just saying that all of the future planning for Byram has to be put on hold while we're dealing with the pandemic. You both really did extraordinary work.
Chris, thank you. Well done. Thank you very, very much. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Kim and Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Okay, well, that was, that was terrific. All right, let's, let's move forward. I guess that brings us to nine on the agenda. The curriculum conversation, a check in regarding curriculum instruction.
Go ahead, Tim.
Great, thank you. And I'm going to present my screen and it's going to be a different type of curriculum conversation this time. I will show a video, so I hope you don't mind that. Before I do, if I'm presenting there, I do want to just give an overview. So this is a perfect timing coming off of the scheduled presentations by Kim and Chris. So that we can hear from teachers about how life is going so far in our schools and in our classrooms, because these new schedules are really building upon what we learned from this year. So I interviewed five teachers across the district and talked to them about how teaching and learning is going so far this year and to hear their insight. And I'm framing this around our essential question this summer when we were coming out of the spring and going into the new year, we asked this question when we were thinking about developing all of our blended learning schedules or different scenarios. We said, how can we create a flexible system that has high academic standards, support for the social emotional learning needs of students and in an environment that is highly collaborative? And you'll recall, I presented this this summer, we worked with our steering committees and our subcommittees on this framework, which is a research-based blended learning framework that we then took to teachers and worked with them on developing lessons and unit plans that use these three elements to it, social presence, cognitive presence and teaching presence. So in this video, I framed it around this framework. So you'll hear the teachers talk about how we're engaging kids in the content, that cognitive presence. How are kids engaging with their teacher? Because we know that teaching presence is really important. And then finally, how are kids interacting with one another? Because it's that social presence and learning is a social process. So I created this video in these three segments and also added a fourth segment, which is around social emotional learning specifically. And you'll hear teachers talk about these three elements of the core competencies of social emotional learning. You'll hear them talk about student self-management, about their responsible decision-making and about their relationship skills. So you'll hear that in the video. And I do want to thank these five teachers for letting me put my camera in their face for a few minutes and interview them. We have Jen Rao from grade two at Coman Hill. From Wappas, we have Kelly Moriarty and Nicole Livadini. From Crittendon, we have Victoria Barthel, who's a grade eight math teacher. And then Megan Salomon, our high school English and science research teacher. So what I'm going to do is show this video and I will stop it halfway through. It's about 13 minutes. It's in these four different chunks. So the first two segments will be how are kids engaging with the content? And the second segment is on how are kids engaging with you and interacting with the teacher? I'll pause it to see if there's any questions or any comments and then we'll play the second half. So I'll start that now. Jen, just let me know if there's a problem hearing it. I think it should be good.
Using the technology to get feedback. So conferring is different this year because we typically meet with like four to six children during math or during reading to give them, you know, personalized instruction. So this year instead, we can only fit maybe two, possibly three spread out at the long tables to meet with them with barriers, plus barriers. So we've been using Kami and Google Classroom feedback to give them immediate, you know, responses like either questions or we need clarification about something, we use the technology and they're very savvy with it. So it's been fun to get their responses back. What I'm finding is that I'm able to integrate like read alouds now. I'm able to integrate independent reading with them now. And I'm also using like wonders to teach the skills and to maintain the scope and sequence of ELA. But then I'm also introducing some parts of the ELA curriculum from the past that they really love. Love. So just having a read aloud and showing it with the IPVO up on the Promethean, they enjoy that.
Bringing it back to our investigation unit, the beginning of math every day is a 10 minute map. And the kids are kind of taking the lead in that. We give the problem up on the board. Once a student answers, they know to raise their hand to participate in another one. So the students are actually taking the lead, calling on each other. They're giving the answers and we're recording. So it's really nice for the students to be taking the lead in that part of the lesson.
I think a lot of screencast files that we've done as well. We'll record ourselves doing a lesson and then students will watch it when they're at that point in the lesson. So it's almost like an asynchronous learning at a point, but at their individualized learning path. So that's something that was interesting that we started doing this year, different screencasts that the students can watch.
So one big thing is just making sure that I am communicating with both and I'm looking at my, my people who are on the computer and I'm looking at the people here. And as we work on problems together, I'm saying, can somebody in the classroom answer this or can somebody at home answer this? And kind of going back and forth and making sure that they're engaged that way. And I think with all different platforms that we have, I've been using a lot of interactive platforms so that whether they're in here or at home, if we're doing a quizizz, they're engaged, they have to be getting their answers in. If we're doing a nearpod, they're engaged, they have to be writing on the screen and answering questions. And I can see what they're working on. And with Delta Map, they, they, they're each getting own sets of questions and they're working on it. So finding ways to make sure that they have something to do and it's not passive note taking, because that's where I think I really would lose them. So this year and kind of in the spring, I started this was recording videos in place of a lecture based class. So I'm recording videos of me filling out the notes, talking about a new concept. And then I have the students watch those videos and fill out the same notes and then set them free to practice. And sometimes it's homework where they're watching the video, sometimes it is part of class time. But what I've found with that is some students, as soon as they see a few examples, they're good to go. They can go get their practice, they can go deeper, they can go further. They don't really need me so much. And other students, they watch the video and they're like, hang on, I need you here and I need you now and we need to do this together. And it kind of lets them do what's best for them. The ones who are going to take it and go, then don't need me, they're fine. And the ones who do need me, I have more time to really spend with them.
They've been incredible about pouring themselves into the quality of their work in the absence of whole group discussions and collaborative, collaborative projects of a traditional nature. I'm finding that kids are finding ways to demonstrate their learning in my discipline in particular through their writing. And they're writing very specifically about what they're understanding and I'm seeing a lot of growth in that area.
Well, that they're very resilient and just like the eye contact and like the body language that goes on between them. Like they can read each other without seeing, you know, your, your face, your whole face, your mouth. So they have been able to communicate. They bonded as a group. And we bonded with them and it's so interesting not to be able to see that when I have seen their whole faces, like with class pictures, I'm like, you know, like it's, it's unusual to see them, but I know them. I know them through, you know, like their eyes and the way they behave and what they say.
I think that our students, I like to say that they feel comfortable coming to us and discussing situations that may be occurring at recess or at lunch or whatever the case is. Um, I think we fostered a really good environment in here where they, they feel comfortable and confident in coming to us.
Some of the most quiet students are now participating and we see on the Google classroom if they're out, I miss the class. So seeing those things makes us feel like, okay, we're doing something right and they really, they're emotionally okay and they really want to be here. And that's our label. We want them to want to come to school because once their emotional space is okay, they're ready to learn.
I think one thing that I've noticed this year has been the increase in communication via email between students and teachers. So in terms of students trying to connect to their teachers, we don't have all of this together time, but I still feel connected to them. And I think a big thing there has been this increase in email. And especially for the kids who are quiet or who don't always reach out to their teachers in person because they're embarrassed or it's, it's a tough leak for them. They can send an email and we can communicate that way. And I feel like I've developed some really strong connections with some kids because they're more comfortable sending an email and asking a question. That's been really powerful for them, having that voice that they didn't always know that they had.
It's remarkable that I can say with honesty, I don't feel any more, I don't feel at all disconnected from my students. I feel like I know them pretty much as well as I would any other year. I can tell you what they do outside of school, whether they have siblings, you know, where their interests lie, where they might need a pat on the back and encouragement. And one very simple thing that I like to do is to make sure that I'm in the meets early for the Zoom meets. And so as kids come in, make sure I greet each of them, pass them how their day is going. Try to find places for them to just share something at the end of the period. What are you doing this weekend? Tell us, does anybody watching a good show? And just making sure that you find places to recreate that sort of, those casual interactions that happens naturally in the classroom. Finding places, places to do that through technology and keeping that open. And individualized personal feedback is always really critical, but it's really critical this year. So I hope that my students feel like I'm reading their work very carefully, I'm thinking about them as learners and I'm tailoring my feedback very much for them as individuals.
So I'm going to pause it just for a moment and see if the board has any questions or any comments on that. What strikes me when I hear that is how complex the teaching is right now. Teaching has always been hard. But I'm seeing just the magnitude of technology learning that teachers took on with Nearpod and Jamboards and FlipGrids and Kami and the Viewsonics and these cameras in navigating Zooms and Google Meets to do breakout rooms with kids. And teachers really learning or working to differentiate the instruction for kids and really meeting the kids' needs. The teachers work really hard to connect with kids and establish that connection. And you can see that in using technology to do that as well. And another thing that really struck me is the quiet voices, the opportunity for quiet voices to emerge during the situation, which was I think something that surprised us, but has been a real benefit.
I, I think, I think it's amazing, the implementation of technology, if this was 10 years ago, we would, in their way, have been able to deliver any type of a true educational experience. So that's amazing. And the flexibility on all, you know, your team. So that, to me, that's terrific. I have a student who doesn't like to ask teacher questions. I have not a student, I have a child who's a student who doesn't like to ask questions and encouraging her to send emails to her teacher and getting those responses. So that's been really, I think, different for them. So it was interesting to hear that.
Yeah, if we just had whiteboards, Tim, things would be a little different.
Right. Ira, you had carrier pigeons, right?
Cole on the shovel, you had to mark our thing on the shovel. Yeah. Lara, please.
I'm sorry. I just want to say I'm, I'm awestruck by the, the resiliency of the teachers, the children to just be able to adapt. I mean, I know we, they had to learn all these other methods and use technology, but just you still hear about the connections and how kids are finding ways to connect with the teachers and vice versa. And, and it's just, it's really remarkable what, what the, the district has accomplished in this last year. It really, really is. So, you know, thank you.
Because they're heroes. The fact that they go out of their way to find out something special about each child or encourage them to speak up or encourage the quiet one to email, they're truly heroes. They're, they're teaching our children in this district skills that will last them a lifetime. So please extend our thanks.
We will. Thank you.
Mia?
I was just going to say, I wonder if there's a, a difference because with, with the older kids and versus the younger kids, because the younger kids are with the same teachers all the time and they have the chance to get to know them. They have the time to get to know them and to ask personal questions. Whereas in the upper grades, they're sort of in and out and in and out and they, they don't have that opportunity as much. Just because, because you know, my high, my high school student made a comment just a couple of days ago that one of her teachers didn't know her name. And you know, it's like that would never have happened in the past because, you know, it's halfway through the year. But I think because their faces are covered, they're not getting that recognition of what the kids look like. And I mean, even the teachers that, you know, she, she doesn't know necessarily what some of her teachers look like. Sometimes when they do see their faces like on, on, on video, they're like, oh, I had no idea she looked like that. You know, it's, it's such a strange time on both sides. So I, I was just wondering about that, that connection piece at the different ages when they don't have that time. Um, so I, I'm, I was just wondering about the, that connection piece at the different ages when they don't have that time.
Yeah, well, it's certainly different with elementary teachers that are with their kids for most of the full day. And at the high school, that's what, you know, Megan was talking about this a bit, where she goes in early into a Zoom meeting for her Zoom meetings and just has some casual conversations. So she can have that connection and interaction with kids and kids can with their teachers. Cause older kids are used to seeing their teachers in the hallway, seeing teachers at lunch, having that informal time before and after school. So that is a little different and teachers are making some efforts to do that. In the next section, which is on the screen now, what ways are students interacting with one another? You'll hear other opportunities where teachers are getting kids to interact with each other. And we're still trying to get group work done. And you'll hear the teachers talk about that bit. And then the final section will be on social emotional learning. So we're more than halfway through the video. I'll play the second half and then we could talk about that. So thank you.
So we've marked the floor of the gym with tape that is safe for the floor. And we've marked spots where kids can socially interact that is safe. They have to wear their masks, uh, they have to keep their voices, you know, like contained so that they're not yelling or excitable. Um, and that helps them. They, we have partnerships that sit apart from each other on the axes and, uh, they usually have their own Chromebooks. We don't make supplies, everyone has their own supplies, but they have parallel supplies. So they can put them out in front and they can see each other's materials. And, um, it just kind of supports the idea that we're in this together. And just because we're a few feet away, uh, doesn't mean that we're isolated.
We partnership up all the time in here. Um, we also do turn in talks in here, which sometimes can be a little difficult when there is a lot of volume in the room. But we do still try to encourage them to turn to a partner and talk about their, uh, ideas throughout the lessons.
Um, you know, we, we, through technology too, through the Google Classroom, comments on the students' work. Um, we'll leave comments on students' work because they're thinking collaboratively that way through the technology platforms. They can leave FlipGrid videos where they have a little snippet of a minute video explaining their work and then a student can comment on what they just did. So collaboratively that way.
So a big thing for me in my math classroom has been math is collaborative. Math is not something that you do by yourself without talking to anybody else. And so that's always been, I had my nice circular whiteboard tables in the past that I missed so much. Um, so I've had to find new ways to do that, new ways to get them together while they're spread apart and split in half. And so we kind of did that using all these different technologies that we were sort of forced into figuring out. So between Google Meet and Zoom and using breakout rooms and getting them into smaller groups that kind of were similar to the old tables and sitting together. And I've been using Kami a lot, giving the students one document and saying, there are four of you working on this document. Talk to each other, work together, um, make sense of the material, especially in those breakout rooms. I think in a way it almost allows them to collaborate a little bit more and it allows the quieter students to become more involved in the groups. Especially like I'll see students working in a Google Meet, um, or in a Zoom breakout room. And the student who doesn't always want to talk in the group but has something to say, may not say something, but will type something into the chat and they'll find a way, they'll get their voice in that way. And it's just a step that's a little bit more comfortable for them, that gets them closer to becoming engaged in the group.
Breakout rooms are a great tool. Um, and I find that if you use them in sort of small doses, 10 minutes here, 10 minutes there, they can be very effective. I also like Jamboard and that allows the kids, um, in the classroom and at home to collaborate on, you know, a shared space where they can put up quotes or questions and, um, they can see each other's ideas. So for example, we were looking at some sample papers, um, and I asked the students to, to say, say, okay, let's read the sample paper, what does the student do really well? Provide one observation, provide an example of it and then put your name above it so we can see it. And we can say, oh, look at, you know, look at Alyssa, she noticed the use of transitions, that's really smart. Oh, you're right. They, that's, you know, the writer did a great job of using a declarative sentence after a longer sentence. Great observation, Alex. And they can see that. And then what's great about it is that it's recorded, so we can leave it up there on Google Classroom. And if they need a little inspiration in their writing, hey, we had all those observations about what the writer did well. Go back to that Jamboard, check out the post-its.
So in the spirit of wellness, uh, the children have been using the analog clock to read time in 15-minute increments. And I've been using an interactive timer. So when they go on iReady Reading, iReady Math, or any of the other apps, um, I give them a 15-minute limit. And then in between the, um, act time, they are doing regular work. So I've been discussing with them the importance of having a balance. So it is important for us to be able to turn on and turn off the technology. But we definitely need to have it turned on because it's got a lot of resources for us. So we have to find the balance and we use the timers to do that. I think just being in school, they're so happy to be in school. And sometimes at the end of the day, when I say, oh, you know, this business is going to start in five minutes, they're like, oh no, it's over. And I'm like, yeah, you know, it goes really quickly. I think when you're involved in meaningful work and you're socially and emotionally connected with the adults and the peers in your life.
They are definitely resilient to the new protocol that we are continuously putting in place because they know it's, it's a moving process and things are going to change as we go. And they're very respectful of it.
And I think that they're learning more about themselves. I think that they're learning that they have more self-control than they thought that they did. Because in normal years, they can run up to their friends, they can talk to them, but we're very strict on the six feet. And now they know to kind of stay back, wear your mask, they have that self-control now. And I think they're learning that.
Yeah, they're definitely independent learners. Um, our Chromebooks over there and they'll get up and they'll say, oh, sorry, let me move back a little bit. So like they really know, uh, the expectations in here. And I think we did it because we have fostered that we are so lucky to be here from the beginning. We have said over and over, guys, we're here.
And I think the fact that we're ending marking period two tomorrow, we're halfway through the year and it's working and they're learning. And every once in a while, I take a step back and I reflect on what they can do that they couldn't do in September. And I'm amazed by how much it is because I didn't know how it was going to go. And they're learning things, which is really important.
But they have really brought their A-game, so to speak. They are really trying to make this work, whether they are at home or here. They have been flexible and responsive, responsive and responsible and engaged and resilient. And they're incredible, they're incredible. And that's, you know, a shout out to the parents too, because as the mother of a freshman and a seventh grader, I know what this looks like at home. And, um, this is a lot of parents helping their kids to, you know, maintain their professionalism and their engagement and their academic experience at home. And I'm very grateful for that.
There you go. So, um, I hear a lot of things in that, but I'm so, I'm just so proud of the teachers. When I think of all these innovative tools and strategies they're using that at one time seemed so far out that maybe 5% of teachers were using. And now almost 100% of teachers are using these innovative tools. And how much care there is for kids and getting kids to become self-aware. I'm hearing a lot about kids taking ownership and their self-awareness about what they're doing is, is really great for the learning process. So I'm so proud of these teachers and what we've accomplished as a community. And this certainly, as I listen to these teachers, reminds us of how much this really, um, it took a village to get this to happen. And Megan said it there at the end when she said she's so proud of the kids and that, and the families.
Tim, one of the things that came out in that last piece was around collaboration. And I think that in September, if you said, oh, there's going to be maybe even more collaboration this year than in other years, if not the same amount, we would have all looked at each other and said, there's just no way. But I, I really think that seems to be what's happened. And what's particularly inspiring is that, you know, we've given a lot of flexibility to parents, especially in the, you know, the middle school and the high school, um, about whether kids are home, kids are in school. And, and there's been a lot of back and forth. Yet at the same time, there really, I think, has been a cohesiveness of class, regardless of where you are. And an amazing amount of connection and relationship building between the teachers and the students. And, and so I, I just give so, so much credit to, um, the teachers and the administrators to make that happen. Because I think that we can look around us and it's not happening everywhere. And we'll continue to learn, we'll continue to grow, we'll continue to get better. But it is truly astounding what, what, what's been accomplished.
I agree. Really is amazing.
Tim, that was great. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Different type, different type of conversation, but thank you.
No, are there any, any comment, any other closing comments you want to make on this?
I'm good. So thank you.
Any, any questions, comments from the board? I don't want, you know, there, there's so much data. So much information you gave us, uh, but it was just great to hear the teachers.
Ira, I think it was great for, for all of you and the public also to get a lens into the classroom of what teachers are doing and what kids are doing. And seeing that kind of work and being able to show that work when our school doors aren't really open anymore. And, um, to hear the relationships that they're building with kids and, and the fact that they have been able to sustain really good content and instruction and change their pedagogy. And, you know, this is so much to ask of everyone. And I have to say, you know, hearing the board talk about the teachers tonight, I don't know if anybody could tell, but for the first time since March, I felt a little choked up at your response to our teachers, you know? And, uh, they're just, they're doing incredible work for these kids. I couldn't be more grateful, um, than to be here. So thank you so much for recognizing them with all of your really nice words, too.
Well, they're, 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 they make us look good. They make us look good. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Tim, for that. That was great. If the community can't hear it, there's applause. Okay. I guess that brings us to unfinished business. May I have a motion, please, to adopt as a second read? Policy 1500, public use of district facilities, 4770 graduation requirements, 4771 early graduation, 4773 diploma and credential options for students with disabilities. And, and once, that's all right. And to approve as a first read, policy 5300 code of conduct, addendum for the code relating to school sports and COVID-19 athletic participation waiver and informed consent form. May I have a motion, please?
I'm a move.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Okay. First, second read, policy 1500, public use of district facilities. Any questions, comments from the board on that? Going, going, gone? Okay. Uh, graduation requirements, any further comments on policy 4770? Any comments, questions on 4771 early graduation? Any questions, comments, 4773 diploma and credential options for students with disabilities? All right. And now for the first time, we're going to look at policy 5300 code of conduct, the addendum relating to school sports and COVID-19 athletic participation waiver, informed consent form. Who wants to speak to that?
I'll speak to that.
Ms. Gina, we'll hear from you.
How are you? Um, so I'm going to be talking about both of those addendums, uh, tonight. But just to, a, a little heads up under new business, um, tonight, we'll be talking about, uh, discussing the proposal for the resolution to approve our students participating in higher-risk winter sports. Uh, and these two addendums will, uh, follow that. So before we start, just a reminder, um, we do have in place policy 2410, which allows you to approve a policy that's being presented for the first time. Um, and the reason that we're asking that tonight is so that our students can begin, um, engaging in winter sports um, as soon as that would be approved. So the first addendum is 5300 code of conduct addendum, COVID-19 participation waiver and informed consent. And this, as you'll see in front of you, this is a, a form that explains the New York State Department of Health, their updated guidance to enable these higher-risk sports to conduct, be conducted so long as school districts and student athletes follow the outlined protocols. Uh, it informs both the student athlete and the parent that the local infection rates of COVID-19 may result in discontinuation of higher-risk sports. Um, they can be withdrawn if the county believes that the positivity rate, uh, is greater or exceeds that of the state average. It also states that while our mitigation strategy is such as social distancing, mask wearing, et cetera, are in place and that they greatly reduce the risk of infection, it does not guarantee that students will not be impacted by COVID-19. Additionally, both the student athletes and the parents are asked to understand that there is an assumption of risk of COVID-19 uh, for student athletes, uh, both themselves, uh, possibly, uh, becoming infected as well as transmission into their home or community. It also asks that, uh, when they sign off on this form, that they're acknowledging that they're participating in these sports willingly and voluntarily. And that again, that they are attesting to following both New York State and Westchester County Department of Health guidelines in terms of isolation, if they were to become infected, as well as preventative quarantines, should that be the case? So that is the, uh, first form, the athletic participation waiver and informed consent. And I just wanted to add that both of these forms were created by the Westchester Department of Health and they were also, uh, confirmed by our attorneys as well. Are there any questions on the first form or anything we'd like to discuss?
So, so this is, uh, so this will tie in then to when we get to, uh, I guess 11.2 on the agenda, the resolution to approve winter high-risk sports. Okay. Um, I'm wondering if we should, I wonder if we're taking it backwards, whether we should do one and then come back to the policy frankly. But, and I guess, all right, anyway. Uh, any, any questions for Gina, uh, on, uh, the accelerated adoption of policy 5300? All right then, we have a motion made and seconded for all the policies.
I'm sorry, could I just go over the other form too? I just didn't know if there were questions on the first.
I'm sorry Gina, I thought you did, please.
No, no, that's okay. Um, and the second form, I'll be brief. Um, this is the code of conduct relating to, uh, school sports. So again, the parent, uh, the student athlete and the parent is asked to sign off on this form as well. We are going to send them electronically, so it will be an electronic signature. But nonetheless, this is really where the student athlete attests to understanding, um, certain things like willingness to participate in the daily screening and assessment for COVID, following all the, the social distancing guidelines, like wearing a mask or appropriate face coverings, not participating in social gatherings or parties or other activities, uh, where there's a greater risk, uh, for, of contracting COVID or spreading, uh, submitting to COVID-19 testing if it is required. And also again, abiding by any isolation as a result of infection or preventative quarantine, if determined as a direct contact. And then of course, as they do every day, um, not participating in both, uh, academic classes as well as sporting events or practices if they are feeling ill that morning, if they feel any kind of symptoms that are identified as COVID-19 symptoms that they will abstain from attending that day. Um, and then again, also this is, um, that they are signing off and acknowledging that COVID-19 is highly contagious virus, um, that they are again willingly, um, participating in, in this and that they understand that if they fail to comply with any of the, um, pledges or what they have attested to, that it could result in accountability measures and discipline per section one and the code of conduct.
Okay. Uh, any questions or comments, uh, before we move forward on this? All right then, we have motions made and seconded to adopt all the policies. In 10.1, all in favor, please? Okay. Uh, let's move then to, to, uh, district calendar. The second read, may I have a motion, please, to adopt the 2021, 2022 district calendar?
So.
Second? Any further comments to the administration on this?
Uh, yeah, if I, if you don't mind, um, I just would want to bring your attention, there was a revision, uh, from New York State Ed. After we last met on January 19th, um, they released a new guy, a, a new revision to the calendar for next year. And that is that originally we were slated to end school on Thursday, the 23rd, but the, of June, uh, 2022. But the rating day has been moved to, uh, Friday, June 24th, which will be the rating day and the last day of school for our kids. Um, so with that, that's an additional day. And now that will result in school being closed on December 23rd, 2021. Um, so we just Bart, you know, put the day back, uh, before the holiday break. And again, you know, just in summary for everyone, this is a 183-day calendar for students, 187 days for faculty. We're observing all our holidays that we have in the past that fall on weekdays, um, during the school year. And we, we will be also be observing Juneteenth on Monday, June 20th, 2022.
Okay. Any comments, questions? If not, we'll go to a vote. All in favor, please? All right, all right. Okay, thank you very much, Gina.
You're welcome.
Okay, that moves us right to 11.2, the resolution to approve winter high-risk sports. Let me turn this to the superintendent, please.
Okay, so, um, I want to thank first Rob Kostagnia, who has been doing a really amazing job of trying to help coordinate information coming from New York State Public High School Athletic Association, Section One, the Department of Health, um, and also students who are really eager to start their sports. He has been instrumental in communicating with Todd Santa Barbara of Section One and with being a real. and with being a resource to other districts as far as making sure that we have this guidance from New York State Department of Health. Initially, the governor said that we could simply open up these high-risk sports, that they were approved and it would be up to each school. And the schools just didn't feel comfortable or confident moving forward without the Department of Health's guidance. So putting that guidance together and waiting for that guidance is exactly what we've been doing at this time. And Rob has still worked with his coaches to support students and to let them, quote unquote, "begin their sport in a non-competitive way" by having their meetings together and some group workouts that they've been doing. And also putting together at the same time, the pandemic plan for sports, for this new rollout of sports, determining which sports to keep and not to keep. So this resolution actually comes to us from the New York State Department of Health, and it was vetted by Shaw Perelson also as a resolution that would need to be made by the Board of Education in recognition of the fact that students would be involved in these sports.
Any question, any comments from the board on this? I have a comment or two, but I'd like to hear from the board first, and anyone?
Can you just go through, Jen, the sports again and just make sure that we're all seated on, if there are any modifications to any of the sports?
Sure. So, and I could actually present for you if you want. My presentation tonight has, has all of the sports in it that we're going to be conducting. So I'm going to share that with you for just a second. Sorry, I hate when I do that. I will take you to athletics. We have basketball, competitive cheer, and ice hockey that started to meet as of February 1st, but are not in competition yet. We are not doing wrestling because of the American Academy of Pediatrics notification that masks were a choking hazard for that sport. Although, that sport is continuing to meet as a team and to do physical training together, just not in the form of meets. March 1st starts football cheerleading and volleyball, April 19th, boys lacrosse. April 19th also as moderate-risk sports, baseball, softball, and tennis. So I will stop presenting that.
Yeah. Scott, you're ready to say something?
I would do the one other question, Jenna, just in terms of thinking about testing of the athletes. Any, any thoughts on that?
Yes.
Because I think, you know, in my mind, there are a couple of questions here, right? One is that the state has come forward and said this, and the county has too. I know a lot of boards have spent a lot of time on, on these issues. And, and one thing that is a little bit just concerning, maybe is the right word, from a public health standpoint, is just the juxtaposition of this decision versus other parts of the school day where the guidance is very different, right? So it's not totally consistent. Now, with the waivers and with public health, you know, green light, if a family, you know, is comfortable, and obviously we want the kids to have these experiences, that's great. The question is, how do we protect the rest of the community that may not want to take the risk and have the? So, so testing is one potential way to think about doing that. So I'm just curious to see what you think, at least with certain sports, like, for instance, like ice hockey, where there's been a lot written about risks of hockey rings.
Yep. So two things to that end. Kelly Seibert applied for our school to be an LSL, which is like a limited lab site, so that we would be able to administer tests. We have reached out to the Department of Health to request their free Binax tests, which are not the best tests in the world. I think it's like less than 50% effective if you're asymptomatic and only 64% effective if you are symptomatic. But those will still be a free measure for us to be able to try to test students if we can get those tests. Kelly, we heard back, they needed one more piece of information to be the LSL, but I'm not sure where we are with that. We should be hearing back from them this week. If we can get those tests, we'll put that testing protocol into place, and we already spoke to Julie Gallagher. As far as quarantining is concerned, and as far as contagion is concerned, yes, of course, you run into the risk with the team itself, let's say a basketball team that's going to be playing together in those situations. It's going to be hard to say that they're not having direct contact with each other. And there's a chance that all of these sports could go out rather quickly with it, even one positive case. The one thing that I feel secure about in the schools is we are now to the point that because our children are socially distanced and the teachers are socially distanced, when we have cases at the high school, it is really rare that anybody else in that class has to go out on quarantine because they have not been in a six-foot perimeter of a person unmasked in their classes. Occasionally, we look at lunches and we have to do the perimeter around the person eating at that lunch table. That's the one case. Other than that, I see the potential for taking a team down in terms of quarantining an entire team. But I don't see the impact that that team is going to necessarily have on the rest of the students in the population, unless they are kids who are getting together outside of school, unmasked, and in situations where that kind of spread can occur. But as far as the school building, I don't see how that that would be any more of a problem for us right now. I don't know how long these teams are going to be playing for.
I must say something about this, and everyone here knows my dedication and love for Byram Hill Sports. It's a very loose secret with me. I am really concerned about this. I mean, I understand parents, the athlete, you have a high school junior or senior, especially the seniors, last year playing for your school, last year playing with your friends. I get it, it's terrible. It's terrible. But this, to me, seems like a giant risk that's being undertaken here with the blessing of the state and of the county, as if we're saying, well, sports is different, and we're almost going to give some of this a pass so these kids can do this. And of course, the kids want to play, why wouldn't you if you're a high school athlete? But maybe the adults in the room have to say, is this really the brightest idea for these kids to be out doing this? Basketball players, I mean, we all watch sports, we know the contact that goes on in a sporting event. It's, it's, I mean, I guess all these districts are adopting it, and the teams are practicing, and it's a very hard thing to say no. But I think there's a real risk here.
Ira, I do too, but I have to say that with the drills that the teams are going to be doing now, with the social distancing and the guidelines and the practice guidelines that are going on, every single coach is going to try to do their best.
I know that.
Have workouts where they're keeping these.
I'm sure they are.
I know it's the game situations that are going to be.
I get it, you know, but look, this is a, hopefully, a once-in-a-lifetime issue that's come up. Again, my heart goes out to the kids because, you know, so for some of these kids, it's the last time they're going to be playing competitive sports, really. Some of them end at high school, that's it, they don't do it again. And you want to give them that last opportunity, but it's.
I can support it for a couple of reasons.
Honestly, I'm a little older than all of you. And with a little additional age comes a little different perspective.
Well, I think you recognize the risk, and that's true, because there is risk in anything we do.
It really is, and I just have to trust our group, with Rob Castagna, what he's doing, and the coaches and the administration, that this is going to be as secure as it can be under the circumstances. So that's all, that's all I have to say about it. Any, anybody else want to comment on this? Michael?
Just very, very briefly, the emotional and, you know, welfare of our kids and the significance. This is, you know, this is now not, not six months, we're going on a year of us society dealing with this, and I get it, I think we're taking risks. And I very much appreciate what you're saying and others. I, I think the detailed nature of, of the review, obviously, Jen has relied heavily on Rob. We're going to continue to monitor this. If it starts going sideways, then we'll have to pull the plug or however we decide to do it. But certainly, we have to weigh that emotional component and the issue of what this is doing to many of our children who are not getting this exposure and that impact on them over time. And I'm not, I'm not trying to say that risk is more significant than, you know, disease spread, but it is a risk that, it is an issue too, and that has to be weighed against this. So, thanks, that was all I wanted to add.
That's a fair point.
I agree.
Any other comments from the board on this? Mia?
Yeah, I agree, I agree with what Mike's saying. I think that the, the lack of activity that the kids are, have been encountering the last year has been bad for their health, it's been bad for their emotional health. You know, they get so much from playing on a team, the social cues and the, that, you know, they just, they get so much from that, and I guess there's a risk. I know a lot of these kids are playing sports anyway. They're already doing it. My, my, my son is playing basketball for two hours twice a week already. They're playing with masks on, and there hasn't been a single incident. You know, it's, I, I think that we're, we're alleviating the risk, the risk, the liability to the district by having the parents and the students sign these documents and saying that they understand that there, that there, that there is a risk. And that they're, they're taking responsibility for that, for assuming that risk. But I think it's time for us to start letting people take those risks. I think the downside is greater than the, that the upside is greater than the downside.
All right, may I speak?
By all means.
I 100% agree with you. And as a parent, I can say to my child, you can't do it. But there are other parents in the district who feel very strongly more towards how Mia and Michael feel. And I think if we're going to give the parents the choice and the students the choice, then I feel more comfortable with this decision. It is, I think it's a family decision, and I think here, you know, I've been involved with suicide prevention boards, and, you know, I think this mental health is a very big issue right now. And I think sports alleviate some of the pressures of school for some of these students. And I think we have to be mindful that it truly is an individual family choice. And that since there are guidelines that have to be followed, that, you know, we've set all the guidelines in place. And I think at this point, it's a family choice.
I disagree with nothing that anyone said on this, frankly, really.
But I truly agree with the high risk, it frighten, COVID does frighten me greatly.
Any other comments from the board on this, Jason?
Yeah, I just want to say that I 100% agree with everything you said, Ira, and with what Lori just, just said, not that I disagree with anyone on the board. I think if this was, on this issue, right now, if this was two months ago, I think I'd be jumping up and down just absolutely opposed to it. But something Jen said, and I think this is what gives me a bit of comfort, is we have seen after the holidays and even with this, the spike in numbers, that our kids in school appear to be safe. And yes, if a team's very well, might go down, but that's a choice that, you know, those parents and those children will decide to take, and it looks like it will not affect the entire student body. And that's something that if, you know, we're going to go ahead and allow this to happen, that's something that, you know, I definitely gives me comfort. Because without that, I mean, this would be a no-brainer to me, because I am very concerned. But I think we have protections in place, so it gives me a bit of comfort, although I'm still uneasy with the whole thing.
Scott?
Yeah, I think, just to add a few things, and Ira, I also appreciate what you said. And I think that there, again, there is a disconnect between the guidance on this and the guidance out there is, why aren't we having the same conversation with performing arts? Why, you know, why, why did the public health officials say that it's okay here but not there? So I think, and why are we signing waivers, right? We're going in with eyes wide open that this is high risk. And because of that, I think I just come back to that, I, I hope we can find a way, not with all sports, because I think frankly, some sports are safer than putting people in the classroom. You know, golf, tennis, even baseball, softball, like, these are sports where people are spaced out. But the sports where people are not, especially, you know, something like ice hockey, to be able to, you know, have testing to protect the kids on the team, and then also that extra layer of protection between the kids on the team and the rest of the school community that may not choose to put, you know, their kid on, on, on the team, that I think that could go a long way. And the only issue with the county tests is, so I've heard lately, that they're not reliable in terms of not only the results, but also the supply. So they're not, they're not, like, some schools are asking for them and they're just not being sent because there's shortages. So I think that's just the one thing that I would add is just to see if we can, because the numbers are relatively small, these are not big teams. That would, I think, go a long way to just add an extra layer of protection while giving kids this opportunity to play.
Scott, once we become an LSL, just know that there are a couple of districts who have offered us their tests that they ordered and they're not using.
Oh, interesting.
So we may have an opportunity to get some that way.
Great.
Yeah. And, you know, just if I can follow up on what you've all been talking about, of course, there is a risk. Of course, we are probably going to have a child who tests positive for COVID and wipes out a team from play. We're hoping that based upon the metrics that we have in Westchester County right now, based upon the fact that we're not seeing these spikes in kids at the high school, that we're doing everything that we can as a school district, and if we can implement the testing, we just have to keep an eye on those numbers all the time. You know, accepting this risk for the sake of kids who, who need and want to participate in sports in the safest way we can. Rob Castagna has spent days, weeks, and months working on these plans for each of these individual sports and individualized them. So I feel that with as much safety in place as we possibly can, we can move forward with these sports. I'm not saying we're not going to have quarantine situations. I would bet we have one in the first week.
All right, Mia, you want to say something?
I just have a quick question for Jen. Jen, you mentioned for Fall 2, you mentioned March 1st, but Rob's last email said it was being moved to March 8th?
For what?
Fall 2. The volleyball.
I think it may have been moved to March 8th.
So Mike, do you have any information about when, like, when are they starting tryouts? Does, do the tryouts start March 8th, or are they?
The tryouts would start the day that they're supposed to start.
Yeah.
So it's March 8th, okay.
And I guess the state probably has reduced the number of practices necessary.
Yes.
Game competition, all those adjustments.
Yeah, and everything got moved, Mia, because of this New York State Department of Health not having the information we needed to really get the season started.
All right, we have a resolution that is in the agenda on 11.2. This is an action item for the board. Is there a motion to approve the Resolution to Approve Winter High-Risk Sports?
Sound moved.
Your second? And any further discussion? All in favor, please? Okay, unanimous approval. Let's go to 11:30, the pandemic plan.
Nick Cunningham again.
Hi, everyone. Speaking of pandemic, so we're going to move on to the pandemic plan, otherwise known as protocols for responding to a public health emergency involving a communicable disease for the Byram Hill School District. If you got a chance to look at this plan, a lot of the pieces of this, that make up this plan were already in our return-to-school document that was quite extensive. But this came to be because Governor Cuomo had passed legislation in the fall that had said all New York State public employers must adopt a plan for operations should, if we experience this again in terms of a communicable disease and making sure that we have all our operations in place. So some of the, the parts of this plan include identifying essential positions, identifying non-essential positions that are working remotely, and what is the employer's responsibility to provide technological equipment so that they can perform their job, planning for staggering of work shifts if we were to reduce capacity in the workplace for those essential workers, looking at procuring PPE as well as securing PPE, how much PPE we need, a plan for contact tracing, as well as emergency housing should we have essential workers that need to reside on campus for some reason. So the process for this is that we created it. We have shared it with our union leaders, we've shared it with all members of our district emergency team for their feedback. We're presenting it tonight to you. And then tomorrow, we will put it on our website for public comment for 30 days. And our plan is to return back to you on March 23rd, at our meeting, March 23rd, to include that feedback that we've received, if any, and then to submit it to the state prior to the spring break.
All right, any comments from the board on the pandemic plan? Looks like it was very well thought out.
And we know it works, so that's a good one.
All right, I don't believe this is an actual action item. It's really an informational item, so we'll leave it at that. Gina, thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, staff reports, Madam Superintendent.
All right. I will be sharing my screen. And if you can let me know if you can see it.
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, great. All right. So for superintendent's report tonight, I have quite a few things I actually needed slides for. First, I want to talk a little bit about the National Return to School Strategy, the 100 Days to Open Schools. We are now waiting for some CDC guidance. I think that, that the Biden approach to 100 days to open all schools may be facing some CDC scrutiny as far as being able to do that safely. That said, it's, it's an ambitious goal. And I think that this goal has been put into place because as I said earlier, there are so many schools across the country where kids are simply not in school at all, where they have been home and remote this entire time, not because they're choosing to be remote, but because of a variety of reasons their schools are not yet open. So that's where the, the impetus of this 100 days to open school and the National Return to School Strategy is from. And, and he's commended for, for that work to get those students back to school safely. Westchester Rockland Putnam School Superintendent and I have been having many, many discussions lately as to the difference between three feet and six feet and what is permissible in school. We know from the guidance that we have been looking at, and we've been practicing with at Byram Hills, that we have been going with six feet of distance. A lot of our neighboring schools, particularly those that do not have kindergarten through sixth grade in all day, every day, are looking to get an ambitious program together to have their students come back fully into school at three feet apart and no longer to have, they have some hybrid programs that are going on at the elementary level. Finding it very important to bring students back into school right now. Since we have been at six feet and six feet has been successful for us, and I feel that it has thwarted any in-school transmissions that we know about, we, I am proposing that we keep to our six foot until we know that the vaccine has had a long enough time to be distributed to people, that we really see an incredible reduction in the number of COVID cases countywide. And we start to think that we're on a trajectory where the Department of Health will tell us that three feet is advisable instead of six feet. I understand why many other districts are looking to do three feet to bring kids back into school right now. From a K6 perspective, we don't need it. From a seventh grade through 12th grade perspective, I'm not sure that it is necessary and worth the risk right now as our system that we are using for this hybrid instruction is robust. The American Academy of Pediatrics just came out in January with COVID guidance for safe schools. And if you look at, they did say that there have been schools across the, some different countries where they have been successful with three feet of distance between students without increases of community spread. But the physical distance between desks should follow the current health guidance. The desk should be placed at least three feet apart and ideally six feet apart. So we are planning to stay with our K6 and seven to 12 situation that we have right now until we find out anything more from the Department of Health and until that guidance really changes. So that is the Byram Plan. I'm not sure if we're even going to, given the, the new variants in South Africa and other places, I, I'm not even sure Brazil, I'm not even sure if we're going to be able to reduce the six feet distances we have K through six in September. I would like to think that we could be back to some normalcy by then, but I am definitely, and the principals are definitely looking at a situation that is, is a little bit similar to what we're doing now, particularly for K6, seven through 12, we'll learn more. We had a lot of discussions tonight about the athletics department, about the start of these different sports, safety and quarantine guidelines. Gina Cunningham and I have had a couple of conversations with the Department of Health to try to pre-game, pun intended, how we are going to be managing quarantine situations for different sports and what the Department of Health thinks would qualify as a full quarantine of a team. So we feel pretty ready and have a very good contact at the Department of Health, one that Gina has been fostering from the beginning, Dr. Toby Levin. And we have had numerous conversations about that and feel comfortable moving forward with what we would do for each team. For the COVID-19 testing, I described that already. And the use of facilities by outside users, we've had a couple of people inquire of board members when we'll be able to use, have use of our fields for outside users. There are two things we need to do first before we can do that. The first thing is to get all of the schedules now from section one for all of these sports to make sure that we can fit them all. Remember, we're fitting three seasons into the time of about a season and a half. So once we fit all of those schedules in, we'll see if we have availability. And then Gina Cunningham and I will move forward with Rob Kastagna about use of facilities to see what outside user groups are using as their return to sports plans and their safety guidelines to make sure that they coincide with what's expected at Byram Hills, if we have availability for them to use. We will know that more by the very beginning of March. And we do feel for these outside user groups that have not had access to a lot of field use, none by Byram and have had limited access in other places too. So know that we will be looking at that as a priority for us. Today I want to talk and congratulate, talk about Jennifer Mui, Khan Edison, Athlete of the Week. Jennifer has been a member of cross-country since the seventh grade, a two-time captain. She holds the school record for every course in Westchester County. That's unbelievable. She garnered all league honors four times at cross-country. She's a member of the spring track team. She finished sixth in the 2,000 meter steeplechase in 2019 at the New York State Public High School Athletic Association Championships. And she's garnered all league and all county honors three times each. She's also been a member of the basketball team in grades eight to 11. And if you take a look at what she does, her extracurriculars, I mean, it's, it's incredible also. She's a member of Athletic Advisory Council, Captain's Council, Acting with Integrity Committee, SALT and Science Olympiad. She plays the violin. She's a member of the string orchestra. And in her free time, she coaches basketballs to fourth grade, basketball to fourth grade basketball clinics through junior Bobcats. I just want to congratulate her on this amazing accomplishment. Rob Kastagna, she's already signed to go to Binghamton to, to run track in, in their seasons. And Rob Kastagna said, one day we are going to look at her and we're going to say, remember when she was here. She's just an absolutely remarkable individual and athlete. So congratulations, Jennifer. Next, I'd like to talk a little bit about the Fine Arts Department. Peter Pollux is bringing music back. We have been following all of the guidelines for safety so far this year with success. And once he came and looked at our programs, he has been busy at each building, looking at square footage. He has been talking to directors throughout the county and throughout the United States about what they're doing for arts instruction. And he has come up with a plan, very similar, if you look at Rob Kastagna's return to sports plan or our return to school plan, it is a return to music plan with number of feet between people when they're playing. He's ordered special masks that cover the nose and have a little side slit for the mouth so that kids can use those. They'll be 12 feet apart by playing. He's spaced out all of these rooms already and worked with the teachers. I worked with the custodians about spraying between classes. They'll have school issued face shields. He had the Operations and Maintenance Department construct these PVC barriers, clear barriers made out of PVC and a clear barrier. And he is all set to start this when he comes back from February break, which is very exciting for students. So instrument playing at Wampus, he is looking at before and after school small group lessons. If he has a lot of students who wish to do this, he will, the, the lessons will probably be 20 minutes in duration. If he does not have a lot of students, lessons could go up to 40 minutes in duration. And all of these bullets represent some of the points taken from his return to music plan that just really show how are kids dealing with spit valves? They're not going to be sharing music stands. The instrument bells will not be aimed toward anyone. And we are ordering bell covers. We have very specific shields for flute players that are going to be attached to their flutes and they will be behind these PVC and clear shields as the flutes, I guess, dispense the greatest amount of, of air. So he has really taken a lot of that into effect. Instrument playing at HCC in Byram Hills High School, pretty much some of the same guidelines. And weather permitting, these students will be rehearsing outdoors while maintaining some of them six feet and most of them 12 feet of distance. This is currently what our classes are looking like. It's pretty exciting to see kids who are at home and kids who are in the classroom spaced apart, who are still being able to enjoy their instruments. And as far as extracurricular activities and clubs, he is working on virtual and in-person rehearsals for all of those with those club advisors. And finally, I want to commend him, all of his fine arts safety guidelines, follow John Hopkins Peabody Institute Applied Instruction Guidance for the Arts for Private Instruction Ensemble Classes and Choral Ensembles. Pete really took on a Herculean effort to get this back. He started with a plan that did not have this music in place. So thank you to Pete for doing that. And I want to congratulate, you'll see I'm weaving in the student highlights in my, my presentation tonight. Fine Arts students Eva Miano and Samantha Milowits. Eva was accepted into the National American High School Exhibition for her work called Just Stop. It was adjudicated by an Association of Independent Colleges of Art and Design. There were 93 pieces accepted out of 1,187 that were submitted. So congratulations to her. And Samantha Milowits. She received a certificate of excellence in the 15th Annual Regional High School Art Competition. So congratulations to our two fine arts students. And more student highlights, science research, junior science and humanities symposium presenters and Jared Alon, our Regeneron finalist. So 31 first of our seniors presented their work in JSHS. Especially given the challenges of this past year, we're really proud of how they represented themselves and congratulate the following students. We had for regional presenters, first place Kristin Eichelbeck and Olivia Kanter. Second place Luke Brioti, Mia Dietrich and Ali Hafiz. Third place Lily Dittelsweig. Fifth place Raquel Canner, Lizzie Manowitz and Bailey Goldstein. And local first place winners Jared Alon, Chloe Weissman, Gabriella Ripka and Tessa Schwartz. And last but not least, Alexa Jindal and second place Griffin Nenner and Sophie Stumacher. And last but not least, I want to talk about Jared Alon, one of the top 40 national finalists in Regeneron Science Talent Search. We know this is one of the most prestigious science competitions. He's already received an award for $25,000 and he will now venture on to the week-long virtual event in March. We wish you great success, Jared. You have success already and we wish you more. And speech and debate, virtual meets, public forum debate team won their first ever bid to the Tournament of Champions. That's the team of Hayden Weiss and Zach Honig, and they are working on their second bid to solidify entrance. Congratulations to them too. And the NISBA Capital Conference and Westchester Putnam School Board Legislative Forum are how I have been spending my time. If I have not been calling erroneous snow days or dealing with COVID cases. So that is my report for tonight.
Okay. Any questions for the superintendent on that very comprehensive and student-centered report? We, we were so proud of these students, really. They, every year, and, and, you know, the Regeneron finalists, we always take it for granted, every year we're going to have a finalist or number semi-finalists. How difficult it is to make that cut. This is a fabulous accomplishment. And I read the Jennifer Mui things in the newspaper and the Journal News and said, wow. You know, just fabulous, fabulous students. Congratulations to them and their families. Just one.
Our kids are thriving in a pandemic. Good for them.
They really are. They really are.
Harder than ever.
Deputy Superintendent Colton Ecker?
Nothing else for me this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kelly?
I'll be very brief because I know it's late hour. We met with the Finance Advisory Committee before the meeting today, discussed the budget, the draft of the budget and the state aid runs that came out from the governor. It's funny, you could play this video from last year and it's going to be the kind of same conversation that I'm, that I'm laying out tonight. It's the second year in a row where the governor's preventing, proposing a budget that relies on federal funds. New York State's in a $15 billion projected deficit for next year. The governor's preventing, proposing a budget relying on a $6 billion stimulus funds coming to New York State. Obviously with a $15 billion budget, that's $6 billion deficit, doesn't really fill that void. And again, same thing as he's proposing consolidating our aid categories into one category similar to last year. You know, the issues again with that is districts have a hard time reconciling, doing reconciling their, excuse me. And there's really no, no compare, transparency of the aid on a year-on-year basis or comparison, ability comparison. He's also doing that and also is going to hurt BOSIs. You know, we use BOSIs because we receive aid. The more we spend, the more we receive in reimbursement the following year. So again, very similar to last year. Fortunately, this is not the final budget. Our representatives will, will, will fight for the school district and, and the New York State education and try to get some more funds. Fortunately, hopefully, I should say, the federal government comes through with a stimulus package to New York State that can cover that deficit. And good news is it's not the final budget. We'll, we'll have some time and hopefully receive more aid going forward through the federal governments. So in terms of, for us, Byram Hills, it's not a huge deficit for us. Our huge issue in terms of state aid, we're seeing a reduction of about $90,000. Again, I don't anticipate that actually happening. Once the budget gets finalized in April, we'd likely break even or get a little more. So that's the, that's my report for tonight. Hopefully I have some better news next time we talk budget.
Kelly, Kelly, has there been any rumblings about the reinstatement of the gap elimination adjustment?
Yeah, yeah. Unfortunately there has. You know, when we, when we had this, God, it must've been, it's been maybe seven years now, gap elimination. We were in the same kind of similar situation, you know, we were in deficit and they created the gap elimination adjustment and it took seven years until we got out of that hole. So let's hope we're not there. But we'll see. I mean, yeah, there's been a lot of inklings of a gap elimination 2.0. So let's hope that's not the case.
Legalized thievery from school districts, is what it was.
Yeah, it's, it's disappointing that we would try to hold and cover a deficit, you know, on the backs of student education. Yeah, it should be in the forefront where we are right now, supporting that. But, you know, unfortunately that could be the case.
All right. Any other questions or comments for Kelly? All right. Gina, thank you for your contributions this evening. They were wonderful.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Okay. President's report, in the interest of time, I'm going to pass. Any committee board members' reports going forward at the moment? All right. Upcoming events, let's see, Policy Committee, 8:30 AM on the 24th. Town School District Liaison Meeting virtually on the 26th of February. Any topics or future agendas or files from the board? On the agenda, you'll, you see all the upcoming events and the good news is you look out your window, you see snow. But we have agenda dates scheduled into May when you know all the snow is going to be gone. So stay with it. Somehow, you know, we will, we will make it through. Communications, the board, you have what's in the packet. And with that said, I don't see any minutes to approve. So I said at the beginning of the meeting that we went into exec session to discuss teacher tenure personnel matter and the superintendent's major evaluation. And with that said, may I have a motion, please, to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Second, please. All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Byram Hills. Have a pleasant evening. We'll see you soon.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night.